Good morning and welcome to the public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance. I'll ask our general counsel to call the role.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Mr. Chapin. Mr. Chen.
Yeah.
Mr. Chu. Mr. Ginsburg.
Here.
Mr. Goldblum.
Here.
Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Lutford.
Here.
Mr. Master.
Here.
All right, good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of December 17th. This meeting is being held in our hearing room on the ninth floor of One Center Street, and it is also being held via Zoom. If you'd like information from that, for that you can find that on our website. We are also live streaming the hearing on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. We're going to begin this morning with a two proposals for designation from the research department, and then we are going to move to the preservation department's public hearing agenda. So with that, we'll turn it over to Margaret Hermann, Deputy Director of Research.
Good morning. Item number one is LP 2685, the former Whitney Museum of American Art at 945 Madison Avenue, Manhattan, Block 1389, Lot 50. The item proposed for the commission's calendar is a brutalist-style museum building designed by Marcel Breuer and Associates and built between 1964 and 1966. Moving on to item number two, commissioners, please note there was a small adjustment to the landmark name for item number two from what was published in the agenda on Friday. Item number two is LP 2686, the former Whitney Museum of American Art interior, 945 Madison Avenue, Manhattan, Block 1389, Lot 50. The item proposed for the commission's calendar is the interior of the former Whitney Museum, a brutalist-style building designed by Marcel Breuer and Associates and built between 1964 and 1966, consisting of portions of the lower level facing Madison Avenue, the first-floor lobby, coat check and entrance vestibule, and the main stairwell from the lower level through the fifth floor, which may include but is not limited to floor surfaces, wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, lighting fixtures, and attached furnishings. And presenting both items is Lisa Buckley.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Buckley from the research department. 945 Madison Avenue was home to the Whitney Museum of American Art from its construction in 1966 until 2014. It is a brutalist-style inverted ziggurat, clad in granite and raw concrete that contrasts starkly with the surrounding 19th-century rowhouses. The building's interior features open floor plans, distinctive overhead lights, and interconnected public spaces that together create an enduring emblem of modern urban architecture. Commissioners, we will discuss the architectural history and significance first, then present the proposed individual landmark, and then move on to present the proposed interior landmark. The building is located at the corner of Madison Avenue and East 75th Street within the Upper East Side Historic District, designated a New York City Landmark District in 1981. The museum was founded as the Whitney Studio in 1929 by sculptor Gertrude Vanderbilt Whitney to showcase contemporary American artists, including John Sloan and Reginald Marsh. Located in a series of buildings in Greenwich Village and later sharing space with the Museum of Modern Art, by the 1950s, the Whitney Museum needed a permanent home. The museum's trustees acquired property on Manhattan's Upper East Side and engaged Marcel Breuer and Associates to design a new museum. Completed in 1966, it was the first in New York City devoted exclusively to American art. Marcel Breuer trained as a carpenter at the Bauhaus in Weimar, Germany, between the World Porcs, where he designed iconic furniture, including the still-popular Vasili Chair, and subsequently served as master of the school's carpentry program in Dussel. Breuer immigrated to the United States in 1937. As an instructor at Carver and in a creative partnership with Walter Gropius, Breuer greatly influenced a group of young architects and by extension, the course of modern American architecture. After breaking with Gropius, Breuer went on to design notable buildings such as the New York City Individual Landmark Begris Hall, constructed between 1956 and '61 at the former New York University campus in the Bronx, now the Bronx Community College, the UNESCO headquarters in Paris in 1958, and the Armstrong Rubber Pirelli Tire Building in New Haven in the late 1960s. In this period, Breuer embraced the emerging brutalist style, characterized by large masses of exposed rock concrete with few decorative elements. Breuer explored the versatility of concrete as a building material yielding unlikely shapes. The Whitney Museum site originally contained several rowhouses. At 100 feet by 125 feet, the relatively small lot required an innovative approach to space planning. Breuer joined the project after the site was selected and settled on an inverted ziggurat form with each level slightly larger than the one it rests upon, creating a stepped cantilever on the primary facade. The proposed individual landmark site is defined by the tax lot. The heavy masonry building projects permanence and solidity yet appears to float above a transparent glass ground floor, revealing open floor plans adorned with cast concrete furnishings and a ceiling studded with modern lighting. Windows on the upper stories are placed seemingly randomly across the East 75th Street facade, and a singular trapezoidal window adorns the topmost overhang of the primary facade. Commissioners, we will now present the interior landmark. The proposed interior landmark site includes portions of the lower level facing Madison Avenue, the first-floor lobby, coat check and entrance vestibule, and the main stairwell from the lower level through the fifth floor. The interior relies on open floor plans with rough-faced stone floors and distinctive overhead lights. The walls and built-in furnishings are brush hammered and poured-upformed concrete, typical of the brutalist style, interspersed with natural wood details, including on the stair railings. The interior and exterior are closely connected with a large glass wall facing Madison Avenue, beyond which sits an outdoor sculpture garden sunken below the level of the street and accessible from the lower level. By the 1980s, the Whitney Museum found the Breuer Building did not offer adequate space to accommodate their extensive collections and rotating exhibitions, and relocated to a new building in 2014. After the departure of the Whitney Museum, 945 Madison Avenue temporarily housed collections of the Metropolitan Museum of Art and subsequently the Frick Museum while their facilities underwent renovation. The auction house Sotheby's recently acquired the building and plans to use it for a sales room, exhibitions, and dining spaces. The former Whitney Museum of American Art remains as Marcel Breuer envisioned it, a monumental building that contrasts with its surroundings both stylistically and in its massing. Its iconoclastic design is unlike anything built in New York City before or since. The research department recommends that the Landmark Preservation Commission votes to calendar the former Whitney Museum of American Art for consideration as both an individual and interior landmark.
Thank you. Yes, and we have some questions. Vice Chair Bland.
I thought it might be interesting to have you, Chair Carroll, discuss why a building which is fully protected, I'm not talking about the interior landmarking, I'm talking about the, it's fully protected because it's part of a district, but why it's important to designate it as an individual landmark as well?
Yeah, yeah, and just to give a little bit of context before I dive into that, I think as many of you probably know, this building has been sold, and when it was first announced last year, the research department began studying the interior, and we reached out to the owner and resumed conversations this fall after they gained control of the space. And as the research department was looking at the interior, given the significance of this building, I asked them to look at it as a potential exterior or individual landmark as well. And, you know, this commission, while it is in the Upper East Side Historic District and designated, and this commission has recognized its significance in our regulatory role overseeing work happening here, the designation report really is sort of one page, just like every other rowhouse or an apartment building in the historic district. There is a section in the report on architects, and there is a description, sort of a short biography of Marcel Breuer, but other than that, it is fairly minimally described for its significance. And we have all sort of common and historical knowledge about the building, but I think given its significance, it would be important going forward to recognize that significance and also guide our regulatory work in a more specific way. All right, thanks. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum, followed by Commissioner Lutford.
I just wanted to ask about the interior landmark boundaries. And it seems like that foyer is a single space, and we're kind of drawing a line down the middle of it. The lobby, whatever.
You mean at the basement level?
Was it the basement level or at the ground floor level?
It's the basement level, so the lobby.
I thought I saw that. Okay, I mistook that for the ground.
Yeah.
Great, okay. So is that, but even so, is that going to be kind of hard to manage? Where you kind of have two separate spaces that are bridged by a non-designated space?
It's an interesting, and we thought about it a lot and went back and forth, and Margaret can talk a little bit more about it, but the floor is continuous, the back walls have been heavily modified, and so really, it's sort of the floor and the underside of the, of the.
Opening.
Of the opening. So this boundary, there is a return of the masonry from the balcony above, so the boundary goes to the back of that, but doesn't include the modern ceiling.
The ceiling and cellar is not distinctive.
Right. So I don't know, Margaret, if you want to add anything?
Yes, that's right. The boundary goes, you can see the column there, maybe Lisa, you can go to that picture of the lower level. There's sort of a, there's a column, there's kind of a material change that you can see there, and it runs down there.
And so the floor itself is continuous, and there will be plans in the future to replace the modern walls around the restaurant, but their intent is anyway to keep it all continuous.
Could they put a piece of glass and kind of wall it off and use the back for something else?
Well, if it's within that line, they'd have to come to us.
Is it lighting in? Lobby lighting?
The lobby lighting is in the, within the boundaries, yes. So it's everything above. And, you know, we looked at the boundaries really carefully, and we looked at how we have considered boundaries for other interior landmarks. And the vast majority of interiors we've designated are really the sort of the main circulation spaces and the main entry halls and lobbies that are adjacent to those circulation spaces. So like at the Museum of Natural History or the Metropolitan Museum of Art at City Hall. And so that is sort of, that's really the way that we've approached interior designation boundaries, and that's how these boundaries came to be. Any other questions? Any thoughts about calendaring? Yes, Commissioner Lutford.
I mean, I have to say, you have to forgive me for this, I didn't know it wasn't a landmark. And it's been, so I was sort of shocked. And it's been such an important building in this city from a historical, a cultural, an architectural. Personally, it's been very important to me that I was like, oh my God, thank God we're doing this. And so I just think it's great. But I do have a question for other commissioners. What is that little, I'm sure you will remember, when you walk down the steps, that little insulation of that, of the, you know, sort of like, yeah, that artwork, what is that? I mean, I will never forget it, ever. Yes.
The question about that sculptor, we're trying to determine whether it's considered part of the building or is owned separately. So we're exploring the sort of ownership status of that, because that's relevant to how, whether we can sort of designate and make it stay there, so.
Lisa, do you know the dwellings?
And I'm so sorry, I don't recall the name of the artist. It's part of a multiple-piece installation. There's several in New York and several located throughout the world.
And there's one actually on an extension of a building across the street, so they kind of face each other. So, and the intent is to keep it. And yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, I know this is very personal, but when the museum opened, and I was a 10-year-old, my mother took me to the museum. There was, I think, a Calder show, and I'm very fond of the building and had memories of it as a young person. It's a great building.
It is. It's a great building and a great interior and a great, again, you know, as we look at and as we start to designate more modern buildings, really, there's an inherent relationship between the interior and the exterior. So it just, you know, we were able with Modulider to do both in here as well, so.
It also, and this wasn't described, is moat-like when you enter it going across the bridge into the building, and it has these historic references in a very modern building.
Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
I'll add one more interesting piece of information. As you may remember, my firm was involved in the restoration of the building in order to make it habitable for the Met. That was maybe, what, 10 years ago or something? Anyway, the lighting, which is so important, those were incandescent bulbs, and they were burning out all the time, of course, and very important, but very problematic as incandescent. My firm spent endless amounts of time getting exactly in LED form the right temperature of the LED so that the quality of light is still the same. So I hope that that survives. I mean, you know, technology will change perhaps, but, and the other part that we did was to work very carefully on the floor. The floor is also very, very important, and the key there was not to strip the patina off the floor, and in a general way, not to deal with, you know, let the patina still stay in this building. So now that it's an interior landmark-to-be, those things will maybe come before us again at some point, but I wanted you all to know that it's been recently thoughtfully restored, I think.
And I think that Sotheby's is very excited about occupying the space. I think that they see a lot of connection with what they do, and what's wonderful is that, you know, their really, their intent is to sort of celebrate it and maintain it and allow the public to access all the spaces, most of the spaces. So it's really a great new use for it, and a very synergistic or fitting use. All right. Okay, so if we're all comfortable moving ahead, Commissioner Lutford, would you make a motion to calendar it? Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now the Whitney Museum is now calendared as an individual landmark and an interior landmark to be considered at a future public hearing, and we'll let everyone know when that is. Thank you all. Right, we'll now move to the preservation department agenda, and we'll turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation.
Right, good morning, everyone. We'll start today's preservation department agenda with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-04851, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1017, Lot 10, 249 West 45th Street, the Imperial Theater interior landmark. This is an Adamesque-style theater, interior designed by Herbert J. Krapp and built in 1923. The application is to remove sound and light block walls, install doors, add seating, and replace a tech booth and light fixtures within the designated interior auditorium.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Valerie Campbell. I am land use counsel to the Schubert Organization, and I'm a partner at Kramer Levin. We're very excited to be here today with the exciting new project that will improve the Imperial Theater and restore its designated interior. The theater is located on 249 West 45th Street. It was built in 1923 and designed by Herbert Krapp. Its auditorium is a designated interior landmark, but the exterior facades of the building and its newer lobby are not designated. Currently, the theater lacks sufficient space for comfortable patron circulation, restrooms and concessions, as well as adequate theater support space. Similar to the court, now the James Earl Jones Theater, the Schuberts will address these deficiencies by constructing an annex on West 45th Street adjacent to the landmark but off of the landmark site, and the annex will provide support service space for the theater and space for theater patrons adjacent to the theater. The Imperial Theater is also a listed theater under the zoning, and the Schuberts intend to apply for a floor area bonus for the rehabilitation of the theater pursuant to Section 81745 of the zoning resolution. So this is sort of an outline of the scope of work. Here's the site plan. The original Imperial Theater lot was a three-block lot that extended to West 45th Street, where the auditorium is located. The three-story lobby building on West 45th Street served as the primary entrance to the theater. We are planning to construct the annex on West 45th Street adjacent to the lobby. You can see on the site plan the music box theater, which is to the east, the very narrow lobby that leads to the auditorium of the theater, which is largely located on West 46th Street, and adjacent to that is the annex site. There will also be a new development on the lots west of the annex. So in connection with the theater rehabilitation bonus, we'll be submitting an existing conditions report to landmarks and to city planning as required pursuant to Section 81743 that assesses the operational soundness and physical, the physical and operational soundness of the theater. This report will also document the condition of the significant architectural features identified in the designation report. We are here this morning to present one component of the overall plan, which is work that is proposed within the designated interior of the theater. We are showing you the work that requires a certificate of appropriateness, but there is a larger scheme of work which includes restoration of the significant architectural features of the interior, and that will be reviewed at staff level. Our architect, Michael Costello, will now describe the overall scheme, the existing conditions of the designated interior, and the proposed work.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Let's check the pointer here. All right. Good morning. So I want to talk a little bit about the existing conditions and then lead you through some of the specific work that we're requesting this morning. These are the plans of the existing theater. As you can see, the narrow lobby building entering from 46th Street, we'll see some photos of that in a minute. To the north of that is the site for the proposed annex, where we have built some temporary restrooms, or basically like trailers with toilets in them. We'll see some pictures of that, too. And leading into the auditorium, the area shaded in purple there is the designated area. And what we're, well, I'll walk you through the upper floors. Specific in the designation is the stair leading up to the balcony. The intermediate level there, where currently there are restrooms, about 10 fixtures for the men and 11 for the women, very inadequate for 1,500 people. And then the upper balcony, which is accessed only through the main auditorium, but exits into the lobby building. So that's another condition that we're hoping to improve on with the new design. Here are some photos of the exterior as it is today. A very small, narrow frontage, once again, on 46th Street. To the left is the annex site. Here you can see a photograph of the trailers that were built there temporarily to alleviate the toilet issues. And this is the 46th Street facade, which essentially is a fire escape coming off the balcony, and a small marquee, even though this is not used as an entrance, they use it for advertising mainly. And part of our application is to replace the doors along this facade. This is a photograph of the narrow lobby building. As you can see, at its narrowest point, it's about 11 and a half feet. That's in front of the box office, so you can imagine a kind of a line of people in front of the box office. Only leaves about six feet for people to pass through. At its widest point, it's about 138, which is where there's a bar currently, and when people crowd around the bar, it's also very congested. So we're hoping to alleviate these. As you can see, the interior here is not original. It's just was done at a later date. Here are some photos of the historic interior, showing the detailing. I want to note that the colors here are not the original colors, and then nor are they the colors that we'll be proposing. But I want to just give you an idea of the level of detail that is remaining and that we hope to restore as part of this project. Here you're looking at the vomitory going up to the balcony, detail of some, one of the freezes, sort of an overview of the house from the top of the balcony, and just some details of some of the figures and plaster work that are noted in the designation. Want to make a note that the light fixture is not original, something that we intend to replace. Going on to the post alterations for today, these are, this is a comprehensive list of everything that we're planning to do in the interior. The items highlighted in bold are the items that require a certificate of appropriateness, and we're here to request that today. Mainly, our intent is to remove the house left and house right sound locks, mainly to alleviate congestion in the house, modify the lighting scheme, which was not original, it was something that was added in later years, and we're hoping to improve the ceiling with that. We would like to modify the tech booth, we'll go into that in detail, and replace the house-left doors with STC-rated doors that lead to the exterior. Starting on the orchestra level, you can see, let's see if I can point with this. Currently, there's a sound lock on the house-right and house-left sides, which creates a very constricted situation at each side. There's only about maybe just three feet of space between the wall and the seats there. We're also proposing to remove a row of seating in the back here. I'll show you some photos of that in a minute. So by widening this out, we would like to add a few seats here and some additional ADA positions on that side, and just have this extra space for flow of circulation. On this side, this row of doors would be removed. I'll show you some photographs of that. And then these are the doors along 46th Street that we would like to replace with STC-rated doors to mitigate the sound infiltration from the street. At the balcony level, the existing restrooms will be eliminated. At the balcony level, the existing restrooms will be eliminated, and these spaces will be used for important front-of-house functions that, that currently the theater has, has to, you know, put in the basement somewhere, or sometimes even in another building. And then at the, at the balcony level, our intent is, is to connect the crossover into the new annex building for the egress and also services, toilets, bars and, and services there, and create new ADA positions along the back of the balcony that currently don't exist. This is a section, just diagrammatically showing the relationship of the designated interior to the, to the proposed annex, so you can understand the relationship. This is a view of the house showing the current tech booth, which was, was not original, was built sometime later. Added to it was another small tech booth that was built kind of by one of the productions and just remained, and our intent is to rebuild this and make it more functional for, for current-day technology, as, as well as more aesthetically integrated with the, with the auditorium. In this drawing, you can also see that the lower rear lobby of the auditorium has been changed over the years. This is currently what it looks like. We'll show you photograph, photos of that, and our intent is to restore to the original look. That's not, not really something we need a certificate of approbias for. Here's a view of that back lobby. It's about six feet cleared right now, so we intend to widen that. And then on the, on the right, you can see what it looks like today. It's basically like carpeting that goes up the wall and covers a lot of the historic, the panels that were, were there. This is a, a view of it on the left from the, from the designation report or from the archive, you know, showing the, the decoration there, and our intent is to recreate that on that level. Now getting into the sound locks. Here we're looking at the house-right sound lock, and as you can see, well, you can't see the congestion here, but what we're, what we're planning to do is to demolish this wall and to replace these doors with doors that are more sympathetic to the historic doors that were there originally, and then to essentially recreate the, the moldings and detail and ornamentation in this area, but just by widening the auditorium at that level. This is a more detailed drawing of the existing condition on the top and the proposed condition on the bottom. I can, I can go in and answer questions about that, but this is a, a required exit door that we have to maintain. We've redesigned these, these ornamentation to match the surrounds. This is all existing in this side, and this is new, new doors. And the ceiling here. Above you see the existing ceiling. This was the original sound loft, and that was subsequently expanded over the years, and doors were added here. And so where we want to clean this up and, and really bring it back to sort of a more integrated look with the rest of the auditorium. This is a view of what that looks like today. The auditorium, narrow. And this is the rendering showing the existing condition and the proposed condition on the right. The area in red would be, would be the new, newly constructed area. Similarly, on the house-left, it's a row of doors here which lead to a sound lock, which lead to the street. Our intent is to remove these doors and retain the, the existing soffit that's, that's there and the existing ornament that's on it, and then to replace, once again, these doors with, well, to, to use these existing doors and add moldings to them so that they will resemble the, the other historic doors in the, in the space. Here's a one-to-one elevation. Currently, these doors on the top are, are not panel doors. They're just flat doors. We're planning on the bottom to replace them with bronze panel doors. Once again, here's some photos of, of that space, very tight. You can see on the left, the, these are the flat doors, the panel doors are, are behind in the sound loft, and we are keeping all of this existing ornamentation above. Sort of before and after house-left. Here is a view of the auditorium. We attempted to show a wide view that would give you a sense of the space and how these alterations, we, we feel, do not have a significant effect on the space in, in terms of changing its historic feel. Once again, you can see the, the change that's made there. Slightly widen the auditorium. Here's a detail of the proposed doors, STC-rated doors facing the street, essentially replicating the historic doors, few historic doors that are left on the property. Here is a photograph and a drawing of the tech booth, which is, as it exists today. As you can see, the, this is the original tech booth, and it only has small windows. The second one was added later with a ladder access to it, and it covers up some of the original, original plaster work. So our intent is to build a symmetrical tech booth with larger windows in it, and in order to integrate it better into the historic space, we were rounding the corners to ease it a little bit and, and to make it fit more appropriately in the space. And then lastly, the, the ceiling is specifically mentioned in the designation. Over the years, lighting has been added, as you can see here, just in a, in a radio pattern, pattern that, sort of following the circulation of the, of the balcony. But in mo- in a lot of cases, it's kind of hard to see here, but the lights have just been added kind of randomly and right, and interfering with the plaster work. This is, this is the orchestra reflected ceiling. Our intent is to, is to clean that up by moving those lights so they don't interfere with the order, with the ornament. Back here, cleaning up a number of positions. Some of these remain. Some of them were new. These green, green ones here will be added to the front of the, of the balcony and show you more details of that in a minute. And then this is at the, the ceiling of the auditorium. As you can see, these, these lights here are just kind of randomly placed and, and kind of crash into the, into the ceiling elements, similarly here, and we're going to clean that up by regularizing the pattern and making it fit more into the exist, into this historic architecture. These are some of the existing light fixtures. The chandeliers are not original, but we intend to keep them and replace the other fixtures with appropriate appropriately-designed light fixtures. Here's a spec for them. I think you have all this information. And then this is just a summary sheet outlining all of the changes that we're requesting.
Thank you very much. I think you have some questions, Commissioner Goldblum?
So in both cases, on, on left and right, where you're expanding the theater into these vestibules, you're leaving the soffit.
Correct.
And how, how low does that get? Like if you're, if you're in one of the higher tiers, you know, in, in the orchestra, you like kind of reach up and touch one of those things?
It's not quite that low. On the, on the house-left side, it's, it's the worst. Can, can you see that, or should I go back to the?
I, I can see it, but I know everyone can see it, but I-
You know, those are seven-foot doors, so you, you know, you can reach up, just like that door.
Yeah.
The exit signs there are a little taller than that. They're probably about eight feet off the floor.
Right. So when I'm sitting in that seat, like, you know, on my way, but at the, at the top of the, top tier, isn't that soffit really low relative to where I'm sitting?
Well, it's, it's, actually, it's higher at this end. And it's seven feet at the lowest end.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so acoustically, is that going to be okay for the people sitting in those new seats? You've got the soffit.
I think it'll be fine, yeah, yeah.
Did you think of extending the, the pattern over and just getting rid of the soffit?
We did, but we didn't feel that would be as appropriate.
Just throwing that out, did we?
Right. Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm looking at page twenty-nine. I think it's twenty-nine.
Sheet twenty-nine.
And the doors, and the existing doors are five foot two, and they're all five foot two. The new doors vary inconsistency. Some of them are four foot eleven.
Maybe just go to the slide and then-
Some of them are five foot eight. You can't hear me? Page twenty-nine.
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 Think of it acoustics and our state.
The existing doors are all, say, five foot two. The new doors, they vary in proportions. Some of them are four foot, one of them is four-eleven, one of them is five foot eight, and they vary. And I'm curious about how that works in terms of handicapping, or it doesn't matter.
Well, just actually go to the microphone, because we have people on Zoom, and they won't be able to hear unless you speak to the microphone.
So the doors in the proposed elevation at the bottom have to fit into the openings that are on the facade. So we're not changing the facade. We're fitting those doors into an existing opening, and they're irregular, some of them are.
So they're in a different place. You're seeing them there. So there's a, a sort of a vestibule on the side, and they're removing the doors from the inside of the vestibule, between the theater and the vestibule, but keeping the doors from the vestibule to the street. And so what you see in the lower elevation are the outside doors. Where, where the, so the inside doors are removed, and you're seeing the outside doors. So they're in a different wall, a different plane.
No, no, they're two separate walls, but the question is the size of the door, and-
Are those handicapped stuff?
They're the existing sizes. We're just replacing the existing.
It doesn't matter.
They're, that's what the existing sizes are.
Okay.
Yeah, and for your question about ADA compliance, they're compliant now. So we're just replacing them with, in kind. Yeah, I think the first one we made a few inches wider, probably because of the, of the ADA, but yeah, it's, it's really hard to loo- look at the top and the bottom and compare them, because the top is, as you said, inside the auditorium. The other, the bottom ones are on the outside of the building.
So, so my issue is consistency is not necessary by any code, by any code at all. It could be, it, it's fine.
Well, we've done our best to try and make it look as, as accurate as possible and, and to fit the openings that are, that are existing there.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
I, I'm sure that it's clear that we have no jurisdiction over the new building that's being built.
That's correct. It's an interior landmark only. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now, noting that we have Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, in the nineteen eighties, this commission, under the chairmanship of Gene Norman, re-designated dozens of Broadway theaters, both interiors and exteriors. This was done over the opposition of the theater owners and the development community, which had recently demolished five historic theaters for construction of the Marriott Marquis Hotel and its huge modern theater. Now, perhaps the next time you see a show in one of these glorious old theaters, you'll take a moment to thank the Commissioners of long ago for this bold action. Now, the Commission today rarely sees applications for work in theaters, because as part of the theater designations, guidelines were created to allow the staff to quickly approve reversible production-related changes. The proposed work today for the Imperial is more substantial. The removal of the historic walls at the sides of the auditorium is troubling because it alters the room's spatial characteristics. However, the proposed reconstruction of these spaces is being done to a high standard with details of doors, walls, plaster work, and finishes matching historic designs. Other work, such as the redesign of the rear auditorium wall, will restore its lost panelled Wainscot and other details. The replacement tech booth is an improvement over the existing. We urge the Commission to require that the existing and apparently original wall sconces described as rickety be restored instead of replaced. Now, a restoration firm such as Aurora Lampworks could surely repair any deficiencies and allow these beautiful fixtures to serve for another hundred years. Now, with this one exception, we believe the proposed work is appropriate and urge its approval. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. So it's largely supportive testimony. There was a comment about the sconces. If you'd like to address that, you're welcome to.
To our, our knowledge, the sconces in the auditorium now are not the original sconces. They were replaced a number of years ago. I don't know exactly when. But our intent was to recreate the original sconces with, with the manufacturer, such as the one that was mentioned.
Thank you. Right, Commissioners, any other final questions? All right, then I think we've moved to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our conversation. And this is, this is sort of a, kind of a wonderful project, because this theater is lucky enough to have a vacant lot adjacent to it where it can build something that will serve and, and handle all of the kind of modern functional needs that a theater has, like restrooms and, and the store, and all of the things that are hard to fit into a designated interior. And by doing that, it allows for the restoration of this interior landmark, which is, much of which is going to be reviewed at staff level. But there are a few components that we are looking at, and those include the removal of the inner doors at the airlock, or the sound lock. And as the applicant presented, they are keeping the soffit and the ornament so that it retains a sense of the original volume, and then replacing and reconfiguring the doors and the walls at the balcony side to allow for barrier-free access to the restrooms in the new building off the landmark site, and reconstructing the booth at the back of the theater. And reconstructing the booth at the back of the theater and using materials and design that integrates better into the design of the interior landmark. And finally, the replacement of lighting. And so those are the four components that we're looking at. And we'll begin our discussion. Do you like to start this one?
Yes, I think you captured the the lucky situation that this building has by the lot next door. So many theaters are struggling to figure out how to accommodate the extra stuff that's needed in a theater today. And often it's a huge excavation. But that's not before us. The interior issues, I think, that you enumerated are all important to accomplish for a contemporary theater, but they're being done, I think, with great reverence to the historic photographs that are available to the team. And although, you know, new elements like the sound booths and so forth are contemporary, but the overall attempt here, I think, is very reverential to the bringing back the historic quality of the buildings, building interiors. So the lighting was noted as replacing non-original fixtures for the most part. I think it's a wonderful job. Listen to other commissioners talk too.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I, I think that this is the kind of renovation that many of our historic theaters need. It's very important for its, you know, continued effective use. And I think this is sensitively done and with a lot of care to looking at historic features and trying to replicate and replace some of them that may have eroded or vanished in, over the years. So I can, I think that the sorts of things they're doing, like removing the sound and light lock walls, adding seating, replacing the tech booth and light fixtures are all being done appropriately and there are needed changes. And, you know, working on improving the access to the theater and to restrooms and so forth also is a very important feature. So, you know, I, I can approve this. I think everything is being done, as I said, very sensitively, including, I think, the light fixtures, which were commented on. I, I do think if they're not historic, that certainly, you know, replacing them with something which is designed as best we can to replicate the original features is, is, is great.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi.
Just to echo a little bit of what I said when we talked about the designation or the potential designation of the former Whitney Museum. The entire theater district is such an important part of the city's landscape. Everything about it, actually. But the, but the theaters themselves, when well taken care of and preserved and being, you know, attended to so that they, that they not only serve their purpose well, but they retain their historic significance and the important cultural significance within the city is like, it's just essential. So I, and I want to say the Schubert Organization is a very important organization within this mix. I mean, they alone have 17 theaters and we all, we know so many of them, not only the Schubert, but the Majestic and the, you know, Belasco, and it goes on and on. And I, I am heartened to see that, you know, yet again, they are, first of all, the photos show that the work is really needed and it's so wonderful that you're addressing it. So I'm heartened to see that that's happening. And I have to agree with my fellow commissioners that the attention to detail here from a restorative standpoint and also just where there is not restoration, just in terms of adjustments and additions that are sympathetic is, is really important. So I want to compliment you for your work and I can certainly support this.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is a much-needed restoration and that it's been very thoughtfully done. It's significantly going to enhance the theatergoers' experience in terms of barrier-free access. And I think in recalling a lot of the historical features that they're going to be preserving and kind of restoring it to, you know, what it was before, it was just very well done. So yes, in terms of removing the sound light lock walls, reconfiguring the doors, modifying the lights, which are not original, and reconfiguring the tech booth, I think all of that is appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Goldblum.
No disagreement. I would say that the applicants are particularly cruel, however, to the architects in the group by not showing us what the, what the addition's going to look like. But I can, I can handle it.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
So as somebody earlier in my life studied theater, set lighting design, did a lot of theater. These theaters are great and function really well for performances. But the support spaces, the bathrooms, the accessibility were not really thought about or, or our society and our values have changed enough. And I think this is a wonderful modifications, restoration to make the building function better for all the other parts besides the performance. I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Chen.
I, I couldn't agree more. The expression that comes to my mind is in a crowded theater, don't do what? And so this improvement here is really going to enhance the visitor's experience and the audience and the operator as well. And kudos to a very sensitive adaptation for the ADA. I share my passion with the theater, but I took a summer time just to go up to Harvard to study theater acoustics. Back then, if you recall, every Fisher Hall, every hall was having acoustic problems and the acousticians couldn't solve the problem. So, so the one thing I would comment is be very sensitive about the lighting. I think the lighting makes a big difference as Commissioner, the Vice Chair alluded to. I think the color temperature and the type of fixture will really, the other thing I would say is about the projection booth is the only thing I think figured out the best to blend in. It was, it will, it will stand out. I understand the need for it and, and, but and I, I share the thing. I don't need to look at the next door bathroom layout.
All right, thank you. So I think we all are in agreement. This is a great project. It's a real win-win for the landmark. I want to just, I know the hearing is closed, but I do want to let everyone know that Julio Peterson is the Vice President of Real Estate for the Schubert Organization is here. Yeah, it's a, it's a win-win and we're really excited to see the work happen here. So good luck with that. So Vice Chair Bland, would you make the motion?
I will. In the matter of 249 West 45th Street, the Imperial Theater, an interior landmark. This is an application to remove sound and light lock walls, install doors, add seating, and replace a tech booth and light fixtures at the designated interior auditorium. I note that the exterior of the building is not designated and the lobby is not included in the designated area of the Imperial Theater Interior Landmark. I also note that this scope of work is part of an application for a special permit for a theater bonus pursuant to zoning resolution 81-743 and 81-745 at all for new construction off the landmark site. The special permit requires that the work be undertaken that supports the theater's physical and operational soundness, including preservation of the integrity of the existing architectural features identified in the Landmark Preservation Commission's Designation Report. I note that finally, that the significant restoration work will be undertaken pursuant to staff-level approvals. So I recommend approval noting that the theater interior has a history of modifications to its features and finishes, which reflects adapting the interior to evolving theater production and access to code requirements. That the removal of the historic sound and light lock walls on both sides of the orchestra will improve interior circulation patterns and will retain the general proportions of the auditorium. And that the elimination of sound and light lock walls will not be detrimental to the operation of the theater. That the soffit, along with the historic plasterwork details, will be retained at the house left wall, thereby recalling the historic wall location after removal. That the architectural features, Wainscotting and plasterwork of the rear orchestra will be restored to more closely approximate historic conditions. And the finishes and detailing of the removed sound and light lock walls will be transferred to the outer walls, thereby helping to integrate the new walls into the interior space. That the replacing of existing technical booth at the balcony will remove a feature that detracts from the interior and that the new technical booth will be located at this, excuse me, at the center of the wall will be symmetrical and will be designated, will be designed to match the architectural detailing and finishes present throughout the rest of the interior, thereby unifying the interior space. That the alterations and replacement of the doors at the orchestra and balcony levels will bring them closer to the design configuration and finish of the historic doors. That the proposed new panel, panel doors at the orchestra level to access the annex will be consistent with the size and location of existing openings and will replicate molding and ornamentation details of the historic interior doors. And that the proposed light fixtures and wall sconces will reflect the Adam-esque style of the theater interior and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of this interior landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Mr. Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Master.
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next two items.
I'm going to go ahead and read in the next two items. They'll be presented together as part of the same project. First is public hearing item number two, LPC 25-05060. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 824, lot 15, 43 West 22nd Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is an Art Deco-style factory building designed by Corey &amp; Corey and built in 1925 to 26. The application is to alter ground floor infill and construct a rooftop addition. And public hearing item number three, LPC 25-03802. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 824, lot 15, 50 West 23rd Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is a 20th century industrial-style factory building designed by Corey &amp; Corey and built in 1954. The application is to alter facades, create a courtyard, and construct a rooftop addition.
All right, please go ahead.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dominic Kozerski. I'm one of the founding partners of Bonetti Kozerski Architecture and we're very pleased to present to you today a, our scheme for this site, which we're calling 50 West 23rd Street. And as noted, it is a combination of two existing buildings that are already combined. Going to start with some words from our developer client, Two Trees, Bonnie Campbell, here to my left.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Campbell. I'm a principal at Two Trees Management Company. I had the pleasure of meeting many of you at our tour of the Domino Sugar Refinery earlier this year, much earlier this year. And I'm really excited to be back in front of you today. As you know, Two Trees has a long history of working with the commission on preserving some of Brooklyn's great landmarks, starting in Dumbo, of course. One of my first buildings just about 20 years ago was 110 Livingston Street, the old McKimme White Building. And of course, most recently, the Domino Sugar Refinery site, which has been kind of a huge success for us and we hope you guys feel proud of it as well. And with that, I'm excited to bring to you today another venture of ours that really is the result of a confluence of a couple major market dynamics that we are dealing with. With one of our assets that is in Ladies Mile, 50 West 23rd Street, one is of course a bit of an epidemic when it comes to vacant office space, particularly Class B office space in Midtown and what that does to the neighborhood and the building and of course, our ability to keep the asset sustainable. And then the second is a citywide housing crisis, which everyone's fully aware of. And, and, you know, with the passage of city of, yes, certainly there's an opportunity for a site like this to really be a bit of a poster child for how can we honor our buildings and, and bring them to new and more pressing uses in our city? When we thought about this building and thought about the design team that would do, do it justice, the team at Bonetti Kozerski came to mind. First and foremost, we've been working with them for about 10 years. And they were instrumental in a lot of the interior work that you saw at the refinery building, the atrium lobby, many of the fit-out spaces, which we felt they brought a really admirable touch to both paying respect to the history of the building and, and helping it transition to a new productive asset. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dominic to present our ideas for this great building.
Thank you, Bonnie. That's very kind. So a little bit of background about us. As Bonnie mentioned, on the right-hand side of this slide is the work that we did at the refinery where we really worked with the team to celebrate as much as possible the audacious move of building a new building within an existing building and celebrating the existing structure and, and the merging of the new structure. In the middle, you will see our work for Pace Gallery, which is a building that we did in Chelsea, completed about four years ago for the headquarters for, for Pace Gallery. And then on the left-hand side, our work that we did about 10 years ago on 25th Street, which was the restoration of a warehouse building and rehabilitating it into Avenue's The World School, which was about 200,000 square feet. So as I said, we are looking at this site, which we're calling 50 West 23rd Street. It's on, somewhat on the edge of the Ladies Mile District, as you can see in this plan. And it's a block-through project, two buildings joined together, which are currently office space. So here on the aerial, you can see the existing facade of the building on 23rd Street, rather nondescript from the mid 1950s, so definitely outside of the period of interest in the Ladies Mile. A concrete building originally for manufacturing, which I'm going to get into a little bit more detail later. So the existing conditions, some glass canopies and and retail storefronts, but no particular, no particular merit on street level. Now, on 22nd Street, the upper slide is the left-hand building, which is an Art Deco building from the mid 1920s. It does feature some very nice details, which we actually got a lot of inspiration from. And then the, the bottom right slide is the. And then the bottom right slide is the backside of the 23rd Street facade. So again, part of this industrial building that's from the 1950s with some altered windows that have been changed. So just zooming in a little bit, so I mentioned the Art Deco building. So pediments at the top of the building, they're actually a facade. There isn't anything behind them, but they do feature these Art Deco ceramic tile inserts. And also very interesting ceramic tile endings at, at the, at the window line. So that's something that we took into account as well. And then looking at its neighbor, so currently there's a new factory glazing put into, factory-style glazing put into the facade. So this is next door to that building. And then a survey of what we see at ground level. So on the left-hand side, the we investigated what part of that Art Deco ground floor facade was historical and which is, is relatively new. There are some areas of that building also that have been covered up at some point in the last 20 or 30 years. So these are interior shots, so a very, very deep floor plate, but very nice natural light. You know, this is looking all the way through to the block to 23rd Street. So you know, fantastic spaces. Really great column system, which you know, is going to now, you know, explain the origins of all of that. So the 1950s building was built for Schrafts as a commissary. And, and it was a food manufacturing building distributing around Manhattan. Now, looking at the 1980s landmarks report regards to the Ladies Mile, you can see the location of the building. And, and the building, you can see it in the black and white photograph on the extreme right with the white building next to it, which perhaps is all known to us colloquially as the Home Depot building. So looking into precedents within the Ladies Mile and a little bit further afield. We had these slides, so precedent one on West 23rd Street, almost directly opposite the site. A large residential tower was built. Then on West 17th Street, precedent number two. There's a proposal that has been approved for a residential tower, also in an empty lot building. Precedent number three on Fifth Avenue shows an addition, rooftop addition to an existing historic building. And precedent number four, again, a new development in a two-story building. And then just looking a little bit further afield, in particular rooftop additions to buildings. So without getting into too much detail, in the Meatpacking District, new building built on top of an existing two-story building and, and then other additions within outside of the district. And then, just again, a little bit outside of the district, but something that we thought was interesting to look at. Looking at precedent number nine, One Madison Avenue on the right-hand side. An addition to an existing office building that we thought was, you know, well handled in terms of the scale and volume on top of that building. And then Tiffany's, I think everybody is, is well familiar with that. So to getting deeper into our analysis, so the, both the 1925 building and 1954 buildings were designed by Corey &amp; Corey. They were also the architects for the Starrett Lee High Building in, in Chelsea that we are all very familiar with. So a little bit of, so these photographs on the left are from the 1940s tax lot. So obviously the building didn't exist. There was a parking lot because the building was built in 1954. But on the left-hand image, you see the Art Deco building, which, which was around then. And then going deeper into as many photographs as we could possibly find. You can see photographs on the left, which is the 20, which is the 1954 building. On the 22nd Street side, you can see spandrels with a sort of factory glazing element in there. In the middle image, thank you, middle image, you see on 23rd Street, looking at 50 West 23rd Street. And then sort of closer, closer up, you can actually, on the right-hand image, you can see the S of Schrafts. So at the ground floor was loading docks and then an interesting system of what we, what we assume are some sort of ribbed metal panels with louvers that opened up, this being a manufacturing building. And so that analysis does correspond to the historic reports that you see on the screen here. We've highlighted some of the key elements. So looking at the West 22nd Street facade, you can see highlighted color terracotta tiles. And, and then with regards to the 23rd Street facade, pretty much a, a flat nondescript treatment. So we then analyzed these, what, what we think would be the existing facades on 23rd Street. So this is 23rd Street. You see that photograph again on the right of of Schrafts and, and our analysis of what those elements were at that time. It, it then appears that, was then clear that alterations were made probably in the 1970s or 80s. So there were concrete block infill panels put in at the spandrels. Rather cheap glazing system put in together with some decorative horizontal bands, which are actually just pipes screwed to the outside of the concrete facade. And now looking at the same, doing the same analysis for 22nd Street. So again, this is the block-through that 1954 building. So you know, similar findings. And at the, the top of, of the left-hand drawing, you can see this more solid element that actually angles back, which I'm going to show in some aerial photographs. And that's the existing condition that exists now. So if we look at item number one there, we're calling it sloped concrete facade with punched windows with varying floor levels. Again, part of the manufacturing that was, was going on there. And looking at the photography and drawing of the 43 West 22nd Building, the building from 1923. Pointing out some of the elements that were also listed in the landmark report or really just to, you know, so that we can show the analysis that we've done into this facade. And now the two existing facades in context of 23rd Street and 22nd Street. So on 23rd Street, on the extreme left, we see the flatiron building and then Fifth Avenue and then moving along the block. There is a, a, a building that is halfway in the block. Then the, then the level goes down to the Home Depot building and then 50 West 23rd Street. And then a residential building called the Caroline Rental Building at the corner of Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. And on 22nd Street, similar idea, flatiron on the right-hand side. And you can see the Art Deco building number 43 and number 37, which is the backside of 50 West 23rd Street. So looking at that site within the Ladies Mile, in blue, we highlighted buildings that are 12 to 18 stories. And in our project, we have aimed to respect that, that height and keep the building within that height envelope. So, you know, some, I won't go into a great deal of detail because I'm actually saying all these things in my presentation, but you know, our intention with, with understanding these existing buildings and, and the idea of rehabilitating them as residential, as a residential project and dealing with some of the issues and obviously the, the biggest one being the very deep floor plate. So at the top of this slide, you see the existing building, looking both from 23rd Street on the left-hand side and 22nd Street on the right-hand side. And you can see this L-shaped building. We're green on, with a green square on top of the 1954 building. So in order to provide enough light and air to a very deep floor plan like that, what we proposed to do was, is to create a courtyard into the 1954 building and then take that mass, which is about 40,000 square feet and relocate that mass on top of the existing building. So this diagram here showing that thinking. So the third slide, we're putting the mass on, on top of the building. With a lot of thought, we felt that 23rd Street being the widest street. We felt that the larger area of mass could be better handled on 23rd Street and we studied a lot of renderings in order to, to, to satisfy ourselves that that was the right move. So looking into the courtyard here, you see in view number one, you see the backside of the Art Deco building and then the courtyard that is in the middle of the Caroline. So in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a, a key. So then we started to look at how would these buildings continue to be altered to, to be able to accept residential use. So a couple of things that we found is the sill, existing sill, again, it's not the existing sill from the original building, certainly for the, for the 1950s building. So we looked at opening up more, more windows on that facade, utilizing a, a, a factory glazing language. On the 22nd Street of that same building, as I mentioned, I highlighted on the left-hand side, the existing condition of this sloped-back concrete facade with narrow windows. Below that is the condition that we would be dealing with. So again, opening up those windows. And, you know, studies then for the window sill heights. And, and you know, we're referencing this industrial typology one because the original building was a industrial building. As I mentioned, Corey &amp; Corey, they think are well celebrated in New York City for their industrial buildings of the period. And we wanted to take some inspiration from particularly the Starrett Lee High Building with its glazing systems that we think are very successful. So now moving into the design details that we developed. So looking at 23rd Street on the left-hand side of the image is the existing Art Deco building and to the right is the backside of the 23rd Street building. So opening up the, the windows and introducing a spandrel panel, which you see in this light green color on the right-hand side of that building. And as I mentioned earlier, looking at the Art Deco building, we saw some very nice details of coping tiles in, in terracotta. So we're proposing that those, those coping details can be picked up in the spandrels and we'll get into a little bit more detail of that. So describing what I, I just said, increasing the amount of, of windows, but the height of the spandrel panel, what we decided, if you look at the extreme left of the left-hand image, we measured the spandrel of the existing Art Deco building and then used that as a standard to run across the spandrels of, of this building. And there is a level difference in the two buildings. As I said, the buildings are fully connected right now. And there are staircases that change the levels. In our planning as a residential project, we also have staircase and elevators that stop off at half floors and, and we managed to make that work as a, as a, as a real thing. So you're just recapping, so on the left-hand side, the proposed changes to the Art Deco building, right at the very top, number one, a single-story penthouse set back 19 feet. We did mock this up, so we have some photographs at the end of showing how that works. And, and as I mentioned, our investigation into some of the detailing. So the middle image, number five, existing terracotta accents. You see those very handsome green terracotta cast tiles. And number three, top left-hand corner, our study, how we can develop a terracotta piece that could work as a spandrel. And then above that, sorry, sorry, below that, looking at, you know, factory glazed windows, also in a historically appropriate green color that, that would then sit in the spaces above the spandrels. And then, you know, hopes glazing at a street level. So at street level, we, we, we thought a lot about what, you know, obviously the general public is mainly interacting with these sorts of buildings at, at street level. As I said, there is definitely some historical elements that are from the 1920s in the Art Deco building. So, you know, we, we, we made an analysis of what we would be removing. But what you see here is an idea that we've been developing, that the new entrance, which would be on 22nd Street, it's a less busy street, feels more residential, that this would be a, it would be a portico of portal rather of ceramic around that. So where does this come from? So in our, on analysis of number 43, you can see the top left-hand corner. The yellow is, is, is new, as you see, because the color of paint is different. And the area above, we would be retaining and restoring, which was part of the existing. The other entrance to the building, which is on the west side, the West Egress, has panelling built in front of it. We don't know where, where it comes from, but we suspect a similar condition. And, and we would treat it the same way. The storefronts, not, not original, there's no historical material there, but what we are proposing is retain the same design that's there now, maybe make it a bit better and, and better proportions. And now looking at 23rd Street on the left-hand side, the existing building as it is now. So with, you know, various you know, stuck-on cornices and, 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 you know, the glass canopy and all of that. So that's all being removed. We're celebrating the concrete frame of the building. So it will be rendered in exactly the same way as it is now. You see the, the spandrels on the right-hand image running horizontally across all in terracotta. And then up above the stepped-back addition that, that roughly, you know, part of roughly 40,000 square feet that we're putting on top of this building, the bulk carrier of transfer from the from the courtyard. So just zooming in a little bit into that, everything I just said about the detailing that we are proposing for this building. And the, on the 23rd Street side, we see this as a secondary entrance. But still, you know, it's, I think it's very important that as buildings like this are renewed and, and are part of a, you know, new, new residential landscape for the city, that they should also address the street in a much more sensitive way than they are doing now. So you can actually see here, we're introducing those spandrel panels running across the building. In this case, they will be a little thicker and will be planters. So it's going to be greenery. And as I said, this will be a secondary entrance. This will be where a resident has a swipe to get into their building. So just as we did on the Art Deco building, you know, right now it's an office building, 50 West 23rd Street. There's a big glass canopy. We're getting rid of that. That's not That's not, that wasn't part of any uh detailing and uh revolving door. And this is all pretty clear. And just uh, you know, looking at the addition, uh so uh the addition is uh is set back from the street. Um, they're uh just pointing out the the spandrels, the factory-style glazy glazing and the concrete party wall on the sides. Uh, a little bit of uh architectural drawings showing the size of the glazing and the spandrel panels um which are on on each of the facades. And uh and and an update on those sketches that we had done earlier, looking at where the um operable parts of the facade could be. Again, referencing back the stereotely high photographs that we felt are appropriate, seeing as it was done by the same architect, uh father-and-son architecture. So now looking at uh these buildings in the context of the elevation. Um, the top drawing is the existing, so fifty West, twenty-third street. Uh, the second drawing, now adding the bulk on top. And on twenty-second street, uh the uh on the 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 existing drawing. So we no longer need the water towers at the top of the Art Deco building. And there are some mechanical, there's quite a lot of mechanical equipment up there, which will be removed. We have a a another strategy um with mechanical, which will make it much lower profile. And uh and in fact, we made some studies for that as well and also in our uh mock-ups. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we've retained uh our our um our status would be between twelve to eighteen stories. And uh then these are rendering. So this is looking at twenty-third street. You see the setback volume on top, the s- spandrels in uh in green uh and the the black and white uh elevational rendering. Uh, looking at the uh engagement of the ground floor with the sidewalk. So uh greenery and uh basically a more um more engaging retail storefront, uh better detailed uh windows. And then moving to uh the other side of the street, uh looking back at uh um you know, the the mass of the building. So concrete frame stays, uh bigger windows, spandrel panels, trees planting and uh and and really trying to uh uh engage in a positive way with twenty-third street. And then twenty uh 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 zoom in of that. And then on uh twenty-second street, looking at the uh top of the building, as I said, on the right-hand side is that existing sloped-back concrete uh piece with the uh with with slotted windows right now. And uh this is what it would look like. And the residential entry, so that a portal of uh of uh ceramic tiles with the existing restored historic fabric above. Uh, stepping back along twenty-second street, seeing the backside of um and 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 we believe recalling some of that uh industrial character of the of the original building. Uh, looking at the top, so on the top of the Art Deco building, uh a penthouse level, uh setback from the street, and then also on the uh right-hand building, a penthouse level setback from the street with the backside of the twenty-third street uh bulk. Uh, so interesting view from the roof here. You can see uh bottom right, there's a rectangle uh in gray, sitting on top of the roof of the twenty-second street building. That would be new mechanical systems, so very low profile, not visible from the street. And then on top of the tower on twenty-third street, the same thing, uh mechanical systems in a very low profile on top of that building. Twenty-third street facade. Uh, looking at the building uh from the corner of Fifth Avenue. And then our our science line studies. So uh this is is really at the corner of twenty-third and Fifth Avenue. Uh, you can see that uh taller building to the left of the Home Depot building and then the new twenty-third street uh addition on on top of that. Zooming in a little bit. And then uh from the corner of Sixth Avenue and and twenty-third street. So over here, the Art Deco building, left-hand side, there's a bulkhead, which is no longer in use, and water towers, so those would be removed. Uh, and there are pediments there, which would actually start to uh uh look more prominent, which we thought was a good thing. So you can see here photographs of the um of the mock-ups um that we did last week. And as I was saying, the the roof pediments, so views uh two and five show the 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 pediments at the top of the roof building with the bulkheads that would be removed. And then uh some studies into glazing that uh we've been uh looking at in the uh in the neighbor neighborhood. Okay, gonna leave it on this this slide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I have two. You talk about the mechanical systems. Can you give us a little more detail on what the systems are? Are they all electric and?
Yes, all all-electric VRF system. Uh, splits up on two levels of the addition that we're doing. And as I said, studied carefully to. Uh, yes, that's true. Yeah, great. So this is uh, so these are our our VRF farms. So we worked with a mechanical engineer to study the amount of tonnage that we need. Um, and so you can see the rectangles there, which are the uh VRF units.
Did you have a second?
Yeah, and my second question, my understanding of the state tax credit, which maybe you're using or not using, is there's a requirement for a certain percentage of affordable housing? Is there any affordable housing in the project?
So the uh currently, the mix of apartments has not been defined, but I believe it would be in the uh developer's um uh intention to do.
Okay, and that's not directly germane to what we're talking about, but I was curious. Thank you.
Yes, you know, it I'm like, we personally believe that um that, you know, with this abundance of almost empty office spaces in key areas like this, bringing back residential at all levels. And you know, our housing crisis is not just at the lowest level, it's also at the highest level. And uh and you you're making projects like this that can reinject residential life to areas like this, again, at all levels, I think is uh what we should be trying to do with New York City in 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 uh um dealing with this issue. And I think this month has been very exciting with City of Yes. Uh, and this project is definitely dependent on 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 that. So yeah, it's very much in our minds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bland.
Two questions. Hope's window detailing is throughout or just at the lowest level?
At lowest level.
And on the upper floors, a more standard aluminum aluminum system?
Yeah, uh, I believe. Raina.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
And and could you put up the elevation on twenty-third street again, just a simple elevation?
Yes.
I just want to see the height of the new building related to the, I guess it's the corner building?
Yep, let me go to the elevation.
Yes, um, that's twenty-third.
This is twenty-third street.
Okay.
And right across the street is the site of the Rick Cook building that we approved.
Yeah.
That's higher.
Higher, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, we previously approved a design by Carlos Zapata and Rick Cook. And those were at the same height, but both higher.
Is that ever built? It was. No, no, um, Rick Cook, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Jefferson.
On page forty-six. Could you go back to page forty-six? Well, I'm sorry, sixty-five.
But thank you kindly for knowing the numbers. Much easier.
The diagonal cut in the back. The reason for that is to keep the courtyard the same proportion as it goes up?
Yes, so the 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 we we sculpted the back of the addition in order to achieve as as many sightlines and then also to get as much sunlight down into that courtyard. The courtyard that's existing for the Caroline is uh gets very little sunlight. And uh and and by opening it up, obviously, we're getting more area of the sky for the Caroline. Right now, their their courtyard butts up against the wall of this building. But as we did that, we started to really look, we did some sun studies and we started to really look at manipulating that facade uh just to help light find its way down into that courtyard.
Uh, the the diagonal wall, the folding wall.
Yes.
What is that for, the folding? Uh, functional or is it purely architaphy?
Yes, yeah, so so we we're looking to try to facet all those sides to to get light reflecting uh down uh into the courtyard and onto the roof of the building.
No, no, I got that one, this other one folding.
This one.
That one, yes.
Yes, part part of the similar studies to do that, to 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 achieve that. Okay, uh if if it was straight, this point would be further out here. So by chamfering it back, that point.
You get a diagonal, like diagonal.
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Goldblum.
That sidewall uh which is of your new addition, what's it made out of?
Uh, currently, it's uh concrete to match the concrete frame of the building.
So the concrete frame of the building is, if I'm not mistaken, coated with stuff?
It's rendered.
Uh, are you gonna be similarly coating this?
Uh, I I'm hesitating because we hadn't really got there yet. But uh but yes, we we would, I mean, we would come up with a coating that looks better than that uh that existing render. But yes, it would be a similar type of treatment.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, on the twenty-third street side, um, the annex or, you know, whatever, building. Uh, could you raise that on the street wall? Is there any restriction you're under uh? In other words, if instead of putting more bulk on top, could you raise the street wall uh facade and?
Uh, we we could because of the sightlines, but it felt to us uh right now with everything that we're putting on twenty-second street, it's pretty hidden and doesn't impact views, uh pedestrian views up at the building. Uh, and if we start to put more levels there, it will start to be seen more. Uh, whereas. Yes.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm talking, yes.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about raising this side, I'm talking about the other side. It's side where you're chamfering and your your largest addition, your six-story addition is, I'll call it six stories approximately. No, I'm, I don't, I don't want to miss this.
To whether this can be taller?
No, I think she's asking whether the the street wall can be raised.
Exactly.
On twenty-third street.
In other words, it says here, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I I I'm sorry, I I misspoke, I meant the twenty-three-third street elevation. I'm I'm sorry, I'm confusing you. This is what I'm talking about.
Can you raise the the street wall height of the existing building?
Thank you.
We 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 could by zoning, yeah.
Yeah, I was just asking if you're under any restrictions.
Uh, no, so we're not any under any restrictions, but uh we felt to uh the better solution would be to uh clean up the existing building and then relate the uh the new building to it in terms of glazing.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I I understand your functional approach to bringing light into the corridor, into the on the on the east side, this wall here. You didn't do anything with this wall, because I can't see, I don't see any view looking east on this facade.
Uh, the.
This is this.
This is looking west, yeah, and then we have one looking.
Yeah. How did you use function to bring light into that courtyard and that?
Well, the 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 sun is not traveling in that direction. Yeah, so here it here it is, so on the right-hand side.
You just see the top of it?
Yes.
Yeah, two stories or so sticking out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's Commissioner Lutfi.
No, it's an office building. Oh. Residential, yes. Uh, that that isn't defined yet. Hundred and fifty.
So and then the windows, just apart to clarify our question, but they're like twenty over it's twenty within each one, twenty pence in each larger one. Then the windows, I was just trying to get that.
Yeah, that's.
Is that, is that how it works? Oh, through on both sides of the?
Yes, on both on both sides. So we we had the architectural.
Because the renderings are sort of showing diff- different things. I just wanted from a consistency standpoint to understand.
Yes, so so the these these are, these renderings are correct.
Okay.
With the um operable pivoting panel in the center.
Okay. And go ahead, what, why am I done?
Finish, yeah.
Yeah, and then at the bottom, you're gonna have retail. How much retail and um what are you thinking about in terms of the openings? Um, this is like and signage, like this sort of important stuff that we pay attention to. But it's very, it seems very schematic at this point. But it's gonna be retail, I'm just wondering, like, how the retail is going to relate? And of course, how how the building hits the street is very important. But and how the retail and retail entries are gonna look relative to the entry to the to the residential? So can you speak to that at all, please?
Uh, so on twenty.
Right now, they're just reading as, you know, surfer, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, fixed.
Fixed, yes, but there would be doors in there, depending if there's a one retailer that takes three windows. Uh, this is on twenty-third street, so those three windows could be one retailer or it could be three individual retailers.
And a door would be.
And then and there will be a door, yes, probably in the middle.
Yeah, uh if it's if it's one or if it's three, it would be in the middle of each one. And what's the total square footage of the retail? And what's the total square footage of the retail? And is there retail on the 22nd Street side too?
Yes, and there is existing retail on the 22nd Street right now.
So I'm just curious because it's not really spelled out in any way. How much retail do you think it is?
I think I have to speak, yeah, so.
So the current, uh, condition is a retail storefront and the proposed condition is to keep the same, uh, retail storefront, even though this is not a historic, uh, retail storefront?
And, and the retail stores right now are not, uh, particularly large in size. The square footage, um, I, I would have to check that.
There's about seven thousand square feet of retail on either street front currently, and it doesn't, uh, it doesn't change much in this scheme. So imagine probably two to three retailers on each frontage.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
You have a very provocative scheme. If you go to page thirty-four, it's an interesting study. Someone's sitting in a room and typically window sills are thirty inches about. What made you decide to bring them down? Why not just reduce it to thirty inches? Rather than take it all the way down to the floor level?
As we studied the exterior facade, in particular, looking at it from 22nd Street, there was a datum that we thought works well on the, um, Art Deco building, and we carried that across on 22nd Street. Here on 23rd, because we're not dealing with a historical building, we thought to maximize the amount of, of glazing, um, to the floor.
I have another question.
Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
The weird, I'm not sure I understand the penthouse. Could you kind of point out how that look? Are you just calling the entire addition a penthouse?
No, so, uh, on the 22nd Street side, on the Art Deco building, on the left-hand side, we're proposing removing the water tanks, which are not original, and also that mechanical bulkhead, uh, stepping it back more and then, and then stepping back from the parapet wall nineteen feet and making a penthouse. So you see that on the right-hand image in the left-hand building. And then on the right-hand building of the right-hand image, you can see the addition there, which is also a stepped back penthouse on 22nd.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Right, Commissioner Goldblum?
So for the windows, you're proposing a window that, where they're using the grids, that has that kind of center pivot like Starlet?
Yes.
No screens?
As in a bug screen?
Yeah.
Uh, no screens.
Okay, um, and also it looks like you are, you're proposing on, on 23rd Street to change the size of the, of the grid. Just explain what, what that was about and how that connects to 22nd Street? No, this one.
This is, yes.
The grid matches, I think on 23rd Street, the grid gets bigger on the upper piece, right?
Yes, because, um, we, see 23rd Street, yes. Because, uh, we, uh, don't have a historical neighbor where we have any alignments. And we, uh, just looking proportionately about how much glass we thought would be good compared to the, um, concrete frame and the existing concrete frame and the spandrels.
So on 23rd Street, your multi-story rooftop addition has the same grid as your 22nd Street retro fit. Am I mistaken? Or is the grid of the lower piece of 23rd Street max one, 22nd? I'm just trying to get a sense of the scale of these grids, that's all.
Trying to figure out how to, how to answer it. So the, the grid is consistent over both.
Oh, so there's no change in dimension of the, of the grid from the lower piece on 23rd Street to the upper?
Yes, yeah.
Great, my, my mistake, thank you.
No, no problem.
Okay, other questions? All right, we're gonna move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society. Now, we feel it's important to comment on these later twentieth-century buildings because of their relationship to many fine late nineteenth and early twentieth-century buildings on these blocks. And also, we recognize the importance of these buildings for the ways they speak to the historic evolution and overall character of this industrial mercantile district. Now, we have no objections to the removal of a section of the core of Fifty West 23rd Street to create an inner courtyard. The work will not be visible from the street. It will not destroy any significant historic material. However, we find the proposed rooftop addition facing 23rd Street is overly large and bulky. It's detailed in a manner which makes no attempt to tie the facade of the addition to the design of the lower floors. The three vertical piers which articulate, uh, the existing building have been ignored and ha, as have the widths of the east and west side walls. The bizarre skinny windows on the sidewall have proportions with no relationship to either the original historic horizontal windows or the new windows of the addition. But the most glaring problem is the decision to cantilever the rear wall, creating a visible ungainly knot seen from the street above their finely detailed neighbor at Forty West 23rd Street. Now, these applicants seem very focused on capturing every square foot of space available, but we would remind them that zoning regulations are irrelevant to findings of architectural appropriateness. We also objected the proposal to discard the historic window framing, enlarge the window openings on both 22nd and 23rd Street facades and install new windows that are substantially larger panes than those typically found in buildings of this age and type. Now, if the existing windows are not energy efficient, there are casement window manufacturers who can meet current standards. The applicant cite light and air standards as reasons for altering these windows. But if you study their elevations, you can see that the operable windows they propose take up only twenty-five percent of the window area and that the rest is fixed glazing. It will essentially be floor-to-ceiling glass. There are many code-compliant new buildings built without floor-to-ceiling glass. We believe that removing this much masonry to follow the current fad for floor-to-ceiling windows is not appropriate in an historic district. Given the Commissioner's recent expression of concern about energy conservation, we feel it may now be equally important to talk about the increased air conditioning demands created by floor-to-ceiling windows. The rooftop addition on the 23rd Street facade is more modest and seems acceptable, except for the proportions of all the window changes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC is thrilled to see new housing built within and atop these historic buildings. We are advocates for adaptive reuse citywide and we find this proposal to be very sensitive overall. That said, we feel the extension on 23rd Street should either be lowered by two or three floors or modulated with an additional setback to minimize its bulk in, in relation to its base and its neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you, so I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the, any comments we've heard in the testimony? I think there were comments about the proportion of addition to building and proportion of glazing.
I would say that, uh, particularly from this angle at the 23rd Street, that the, the bulk, uh, does not seem overly large con, considering the width of the street and the sightlines. 23rd Street, as shown in the elevations, uh, does have tall buildings, lower buildings, and we believe that this doesn't, uh, is not detrimental to that city landscape of the street. With regards to the proportion of the glazing, uh, of the addition, we intentionally did not want to replicate the concrete frame of the existing building in order to, um, differentiate that from the existing building to, to, uh, celebrate this as an example of adaptive reuse, that this is a distinctly new piece that's going on top of an existing building. So, uh, hence the desire to create the ribbons of glass, which, you know, we see in this doubly high building. And then the slotted windows on the side are, um, the intention is to really minimize the amount of openings on that facade, just to give targeted views from, uh, from rooms that are on the corner, down 23rd Street to the east and the west. And I would also say that if you look at this rendering, you can see that backside that we chamfered away, exactly for the reason that we described. If that had been straight, you would have a little bit more bulk there. So by chamfering it away, we're reducing the amount of bulk. And the, 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 the sun is kind of operating behind us, looking at this view. So the sun is, is moving from kind of this axis to the left. So, uh, and I, I, I understood the comment about, you know, preserving and, and indeed adding additional light to the, uh, the neighbor building, the Caroline. But also, the sculpting of that piece was also intended to reduce the bulk more.
Right, yes, and just state your name before you speak.
So, uh, one of the, the comments was that, uh, project intends to absolutely maximize the amount of square footage and, and that is not the case. Uh, there's, uh, roughly thirty thousand square feet of remaining FAR that this, uh, project does not utilize. And, and the reason for that being obviously too proportional to the scale of the street, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other final questions? All right, so let's close the hearing. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and I know we're gonna have a very interesting discussion. And I think I just want to, again, sort of frame and provide some context. You know, as we know, adaptive reuse has long been a tool in the preservation toolbox. Um, and we have, as a commission, approved a lot of change on both individual landmarks and buildings within historic districts to aid in the long-term use and vitality and life of historic, our historic buildings. And, um, we're at a moment in time when there is a lot of discussion about converting office buildings to residential use, something that we're very familiar with and, um, and I think is very much within our kind of realm of expertise. And, um, while we, and, and, you know, specifically to increase housing units. And while we, um, you know, so while every application is reviewed on a case-by-case basis, considering the unique circumstances of each site, and we'll do that here, it is important to note that our discussion about a, an addition that is not a typical minimally visible addition is important and, um, will not necessarily set a precedent because each site has different conditions, but will inform our discussions going forward as we continue to see applications for office conversions to increase housing units. But in some things, I think that, and, and just, so I'm focusing on the Fifty West 23rd Street building right now, where they are scooping out the middle to create a courtyard which provides legal light and air for the residential use, again, something we're familiar with, and then recapturing that space on top in a way that, um, you know, that they, where they have studied the building and made a, a decision about design and placement. And then at the Art Deco building on 22nd Street, the proposal includes, um, storefronts and a more kind of typical rooftop addition and window replacement as well. And so, um, on the Fifty West 23rd Street building, some things I guess that we can think about are, you know, some of our early, uh, conversions of industrial buildings were in Tribeca, right, where we had very deep four-floor plates. And at the time, it was not yet fully, um, converted to residential use and there were a lot of conversions happening. And we allowed for the scoop out in the middle to create courtyards and recapturing that space on top of those buildings in a way that was visible and multi-story. Um, and those buildings were, while industrial, had, uh, cornices and other ornament, you know, that some of the later industrial buildings don't. So looking at some of those, we've also allowed for visible additions on more utilitarian, uh, industrial buildings, like the Domino Sugar Refinery and others. So that's another thing to think about as we think about this industrial building within this district. And then also just thinking about this particular district specifically. Um, and the designation report talks about the sort of four major periods or phases of development. And there's the early phase in the mid-eighteenth, nineteenth century, for when it was developed as a residential neighborhood with row houses. Then there is sort of a, a second phase in the mid-nineteenth century, eighteen-fifties to eighteen-seventies, when, um, it started to have early commercial, uh, construction and many of those row houses started to be converted to commercial use. And then there's a third, uh, phase of construction when, um, really it was like the heyday of the department stores. And, um, clothing manufacturing changed. Instead of just selling dry goods, it was ready-to-wear clothes. And so department stores became, um, really dominant in this neighborhood. And, um, and so those are the, sort of the three big phases that get us to this, buildings that I think we think of in this particular historic district. Then there is the sort of nineteen-thirties, sort of post-World War One to nineteen-thirties. And this building is in the post-World War One phase when, um, all the department stores actually started to close. Buildings were converted to ma, manufacturing use, this was a manufacturing building. And, um, taller store and loft buildings were constructed. So, and then the, the designation report also talks about how in the nineteen-thirties, then we see a period of decline when many buildings were demolished, many parking lots were cre, uh, created. Most of those parking lots, I think, at this point have new buildings on them and some very exciting and bold and tall buildings that this commission has approved. I don't know that there are any parking lots left, so that's interesting that, that we've seen that sort of phase of development happen under our jurisdiction. But so the, the designation report really talks about the row houses, altered and converted row houses, store and loft buildings, department store buildings. It does, uh, and while it does talk about this manufacturing layer during this period of almost decline, it doesn't specifically call that out as a building type for which this district is really, was designated. So that's, those are some things you can think about as you think about the changes that are being proposed today. that are being proposed today on the building, which, and I neglected to mention also on this, there are the storefront changes as well as the removal of the spandrels and enlarging the window openings. So with all of that, we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
So first of all, I think this was a thoughtful and complete presentation, which I appreciate, and I know adaptive reuse and converting office manufacturing to residential is not easy. And you needed to scoop out to create that center court. And I understand why you didn't use all the FAR. I would have been interested in seeing those studies if you had done them. And I also appreciate that in doing the courtyard, you're actually improving your neighbors, the residential buildings, light by, in effect, extending the courtyard east. I think there have been discussion on the 23rd Street facade of the addition, and I think what you've done makes a lot of sense because it has windows that are similar to below, but it doesn't mimic, totally mimic below, and I think that's quite honestly more appropriate than doing something so it more clearly defines what the addition is to the existing. I think there's some certain things that have been identified here that probably need more development and can be done with the staff unless the signage or something else, but the storefronts, where's the signage, how is all of that working? And I understand that some of that you may not know till you have specific tenants. There was some discussion and comment on the finish of the side facade of the addition and how that ties together. And, you know, it might actually be good if there was some, even a line differentiating what was new and an existing or something subtle. But in general, and I find the height appropriate, other Commissioners may have other comments, and in general, I think this is a thoughtful project that can be moved ahead, working with staff to resolve and find the things that are not fully resolved at this point.
Right. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I echo the Commissioner Ginsburg's comments. It's a well thought out, but obviously a lot of details. I'm sure a lot of Commissioners have comments about, you know, because there are indeed other options, for example, the comment about the window on the side. But as been alluded by the chair, you know, this area, much like the city, move in phases, and each phase is a different space of our life and our civilization. And at this moment in time, we have a housing crisis, and so I'm glad that the applicant is thoughtfully thinking about, you know, and I have no problem with scooping out. Obviously, you need to do that. The floor plates are simply too deep in industrial uses, industrial buildings. It's by nature a very industrial, former industrial building, and so the window is trying to, you know, mimic the original vocabulary. And so, and so I would love to hear the rest of the comments. Obviously, I'm sure there'll be suggestion on how to, you know, work on the details.
Thank you. Vice Chair Land?
Well, here comes some. I feel that if, I think the city will be in great shape if the level of creativity and appropriateness that is shown in this application is brought to other projects around the city, of which there will be many, we hope, because of the need for new housing taking the place of excess office buildings. So this is a wonderful model, in my judgment. I don't want to speak to all the details of it because it's in the hands of a very good architectural team. It is underdesigned in some ways that is probably appropriate at this point, but it needs to be, all these details need to be worked through with staff. But I wanted to just specifically talk to the addition on the roof. I'm sort of exhausted by hearing yet every, almost every Tuesday, minimally visible rooftop addition. You know, I'm an architect. I always have thought, you know, let's see architecture that's good and appropriate. Why should it be minimally visible always? So this is taking a huge chunk of floor area and using the zoning powers that we have, but as testimony said, you know, we don't go by the zoning. If it's not appropriate, we don't allow a full zoning envelope, and I think that's appropriate. But here, we're really creating a new building, an old building and a new building combined. To me, this is the most exciting architecture of the moment. It's the most important and relevant architecture of the moment in cities across the country, not just here. And it makes a statement, and the statement is, as has been said, is appropriate because it differentiates the top from the bottom, and the top is not too high, in my judgment. That's why I asked to see the elevation of the street. It's, you know, approximate to the neighbor. So I could go on and on, and I won't. I don't intend to, but I think the principles that are being brought forth here in this project, although very specific to this project, the scooping is fantastic, by the way. The scooping is really brilliant. Not the scooping out, but the cutback. Yeah, the playing, whatever you want to call it. It's a brilliant response to sunlight and the movement of sun. Anyway, I just think others will talk about other aspects of the project, but I'm thrilled by this project. I have no problem with any of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I think in general, obviously, as others are saying, that, you know, the conversion to residential is, that's happening, and in the instances, is important and helpful for the city right now. I found the 22nd Street aspect, well, we're discussing both of them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The 43 West 22nd Street, I think that's appropriate, the treatment of the existing Art Deco building, the enlargement next door to it on the second annex, I think is slanted back and cantilevered far back in the part that's coming from the other street. So I think that that's working quite well, and there may be some details of the, you know, both on the existing building and the annex that they could work with their staff on. So that in general, I'm quite happy with. The 23rd Street side, I feel has, you know, a very industrial appearance. Of course, it was originally a factory building, and the original 50s building is not particularly contributing. So, but I wonder if there's maybe too much glazing on the building and maybe there could be some details that would make it a little more compatible with the existing streetscape. And my main issue, I guess, is I do think the addition on top of the, on the 23rd Street side is really too high. And yes, we permitted a lot of additions on top of buildings, and this is not a particularly distinguished building, so I could certainly go with an addition. But I feel the proportions seem kind of out of whack for what we usually permit. Usually, we don't permit, like, it's like six stories on top of nine or something. That's why I was asking the question about raising the street facade, because I was thinking, well, given this building isn't that distinguished, that if there, it was a couple stories up closer to the adjacent building on the other, the tall building on the other side, then you could have an addition on top of it that was not so overpowering. And also that the commentary about the vertical, the horizontality of the last stories, I understood what the applicant was saying, but right now, it seems like it's more of an extension of the building because there's not enough difference. So, I mean, maybe the fenestration on the top two or three stories could be, I mean, granted, you raise the, the street facade, could be, you know, more horizontal and just be more different. Yeah, I would go and make it even more different than the, as is pretty typical of what we see in additions on top of buildings. In this case, I'll call it the annex to distinguish it from the other building, the 50s building. So those are my, I guess, all of my thoughts on the matter, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
So this is a very exciting project in a lot of ways, and it's in good hands because this particular developer is very experienced at working with industrial buildings and, which this is, I don't truly see this as a class B building. It's an industrial building with a lot of depth that is being converted to residential. There was a huge crisis in the city, so it happens to fall within the purview of this new program. But just back to my point, this developer has done a very good job in, with industrial buildings in Dumbo, you know, really pioneering there and converting them to residential use in addition to office use, but the residential uses came first, and they were very well done. And then, you know, the whole mixed-use nature of the development at Domino, some of the things that are being done here are, you know, the best of which are being incorporated in this project, and I think the architect is a very talented architect. My guess is it's going to be a condo building. It's, you know, floor-to-floor heights are 12 feet. But I do want to say one more thing about housing, which is, you know, this, every day, I work in this, every single day, there is an incredible crisis in the city. You know, the rental market is through the roof, and now at both ends of the for-sale market, there's crisis. If you're buying a small unit, it's super expensive because of interest rates for first-time homeowners, and there's a little bit of a feeding frenzy going on right now at the upper end of the market. And because of the lack of units, no matter what part of the market you're looking to, you know, fill the void in, it's necessary. So, so whatever this becomes, it's going to be, it's going to be important. I think this is a terrific project, and I just want to address the first issue of, and get it out of the way, which is the sort of the height and the bulk. Certainly, 23rd Street can take this. It's not that high relative to the scale within the surrounding buildings. If you look, you know, to the west, I think that is, and then a couple of, you're not showing it in this, but a couple of buildings down on the east, there's height that supports this increase in height, and I think it's actually, it's not out of control, you know, there. It speaks well. It goes up just a, you know, I don't know how many more stories, but it's not in any way going to stick out like a sore thumb, and the setback helps ensure that. The minimal visibility on 22nd Street, I just don't see it as a problem. I also feel like the language of the addition really, it's actually quite elegant, and it's, you know, modernism is sort of a lovely, it makes a nice statement in an understated way, but it speaks to what's below it. So it's deferential, but it's new without saying, please, look at me immediately. And I think that speaks well. I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing it. I don't have a problem with the windows on the side, on the lot line side. I do feel like there does need to be a little more, we need a little more information about what's going on at the base of building. It is so important. This is an important commercial strife, and we, throughout the city and all of our landmark districts, we pay a lot of attention to the retail. I don't really think it's a great idea to resolve this with staff. I would like the retail to come back to us. And the other issues about the materiality above, I think, you know, unless the other Commissioners think it's necessary to come back, I think that could be resolved with staff. But I don't have a problem with the fact that the windows, you know, the multi-paint windows have a smaller opening. They have an opening, and you can't open, you know, these, the entire area.
Well, actually, they're replacing the concrete spandrels with a thinner terracotta spandrel, so the openings get bigger.
Right, but the comment from the Victorian Society, that's really what I was referring to. I'm just sort of going a little back and forth. So that, you know, I hope to see a little more of this project back here, and I look forward to seeing it on the landscape.
And then if people could also, you know, as we do talk about a visible addition, because it is, an addition of this size is not the typical addition we see, just in your comments, to be really clear about why that addition is appropriate in your view. And I laid out some thoughts that are more utilitarian industrial building that doesn't have a termination, can go on taller, maybe that typology isn't a typology that's defined by its height, the way a row house might be, and therefore, an extrusion above could be appropriate. But so just as we all talk about it, talk about the, you know, why? Because this will be important as we go forward and look at other applications, why large additions on buildings, and I think you talked about how it was deferential still in its design. Yeah. Okay.
Yes. It is. Okay. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, this is a very exciting adaptive reuse project that's going to bring in 150 residential units to this district and to our city. I think that this project was very cleverly designed and very well thought out. I like the way that they scooped it out and brought in sunlight, a lot of consideration about how they brought sunlight into the courtyard. In terms of the height, I think that they decided to put the bulk and the height on 23rd Street, which makes a lot of sense. And when I look at the streetscape, I think that this street can certainly handle this height, and, you know, it fits in well, given that it's not overwhelming the streetscape. And like Jeannie said, this new addition is set back, so it's very clear that this is a new addition. The design relates to what's below and yet is different. I like the green spandrels. I think it gives it character, and it talks to the industrial... history of this building. And therefore, I think that the large scale glazing makes sense because of kind of the reference to its history. On the 22nd Street side, the penthouse, I think, is modest. They've replaced the water towers. It makes a lot of sense. And then the only other thing I would say is, yes, on the retail streetscape, I think that the details have not been refined. I actually think that they could, I would feel comfortable with them refining these details with staff. But if they wanted to come back, they certainly could. And I think that's pretty much the major topics.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I think this is an exceptional project. And I, I, I think they used all the architectural tools of the 20th century to create an incredible assemblage of buildings, of one building, but adding to it. I'll start with the courtyard, you know, courtyards, you know, cutting out courtyard is one thing, but trying to get light into the courtyard and to amplify the light by using glass and this is a problem of the of our century, how to amplify once the building gets taller, how to bring more light into the courtyard. And this is a an incredible effort that they did here to do that. And I, and it works. The 22nd Street side, the 22nd Street side, I think it's fine. It works well. I I do think that the form addition to this building kind of works, but it doesn't. It's not there yet because I understand the function of the bent plane and how the light would reflect and all of that. And functional strategy makes sense, but the form that it makes is not in harmony with the building itself. And they could adjust that by by other means, the columns, the extending it, some curving it in the back, there are other tools they could use to make that better, to make that that whole structure be quite beautiful element and not be so distracting as it is now.
Very interesting conversation about an interesting project. I think that this project sits at the intersection of a lot of different issues that we're, we have been dealing with and we will, we will deal with even more now that City of Yes has been approved. And that is, you know, now there's more floor area on the table to be used by by applicants if they choose to build lower, you know, lower income housing, you know, more affordable housing. So I think we're going to see it, even though in this case, it may not be the case. And the 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 issue of commercial to residential conversions carries with it this this need to put the displaced floor area somewhere. So I think that I think it's, I think it, you know, like Fred said, the idea that you, that it's okay to see additions on buildings and to see them as modern incursions in a streetscape that honors its history, but doesn't stay fixed in place. I think that that the project touches on all of those. Kind of reminds me of of the Terminal Stores project that we saw a few months ago, where there was a similar scooping out of floor area and sticking it on top in a very visible way. There, the choice was made to have the the addition contrast considerably more than this does. I think this is much more kind of of an evolutionary aesthetic as opposed to a oppositional one. And I think that's okay. I think the choice to render the addition on on 23rd Street with a more horizontal orientation, more lighter orientation with a smaller spandrel detail is okay. It certainly relates as a single building and works as a single object. I think that Diana is right that the building would have been better had it gone straight up. I think the setback was anathema to this particular district. If you look at the way that mid block buildings in the district go, they go straight up. And that's a feature. You know, you don't have setbacks like you have on, you know, in other districts. The straight up mass, the volume of that of those buildings, like the one that's in the foreground here, it's very much frontal without setbacks. And I think the building would have been better and you could have had your contrast with the below with a volume that pushes forward, which might have allowed you to cut it down by a floor. But I don't think the height is an issue. I don't think that this approach, which is certainly kind of canonical, is an issue. But I think it would have been better had it just come right out there. I'm very, very worried about the coating on the concrete. The coating on the concrete in this building looks like crap. And this architect has done a building that had coated concrete, the avenues building, and that looks pretty good. I worry about longevity of those coatings and how they tend to get dirty looking quickly. So I would hope that as they work with staff, that they explore the possibility of either stripping it and putting on something that's lighter and thinner, and that might look well over time, or doing other things that that look at the coatings and make sure that it's not going to continue to look like crap. And since that's going to be, and I think they could also look at varying their new building from the existing by not coating it, which might give a subtle contrast that would promise greater longevity. I think that the comments about detail are, I hear them and agree with them. I think that the spandrel is an interesting, terracotta spandrel is an interesting unifying device. But I think the way that it's edged and detailed and intersects with the sills and intersects with storefronts and how the signage works with that, how the storefronts work with that are all things that should be elaborated. It's one of the, you know, the other comments that, you know, another another theme that this touches on is is big buildings are hard to swallow in one hearing because there's lots of things going on. And we're only looking at the stuff that they're presenting to us. And I think that Jeannie is focusing on the retail and and some of the comments and the staff level comments are about the details. I think it's a good idea to really work in those details to give the building a level of interest that it's currently lacking. I think that that could be handled at a staff level, but I do think that as part of that, there should be explicit drawings that relate to parameters of signage and issues of doors in multiple options, as we often see in retail settings where you have a master plan, you haven't yet rented your space. So I think, I think that it's also interesting that on the day when we designate Whitney, that we have a building that looks like someone's been looking at the Whitney a little bit at the back. And I think it's an interesting, interesting project from that perspective. I think that that the visibility of that is acceptable and appropriate and interesting. I'm, I think it's okay having the chamfer like this. It kind of reminds me of that Gene Gang Building on 14th Street where similar light, light cutouts. It's an interesting approach. And I think it's, again, appropriate. And I think the faceting also is is okay to be seen this much because it is modern, because it signals the fact that this is an addition and that it doesn't really belong to the industrial vocabulary. So I generally think the project is okay. I think it would benefit from further study in terms of the volume and massing, but I could approve it as as is. I could vote for it as is.
Let me put the mic on. Thank you for your comments, commissioners. I think this was a really interesting and good discussion and a good discussion for us to think about and and and, you know, have in our minds as we move forward with hopefully more applications for conversions. And of course, each site will be reviewed on a case by case basis. But I think on this particular site, I think first on the 22nd Street Art Deco Building, everybody is comfortable with the proposed changes there and the minimally visible rooftop addition. And then on the 23rd Street side, I think we have a general level of comfort with the idea of cutting out in the middle to create a courtyard and putting that bulk on the 23rd Street side, which is the wider street with taller buildings. And I think that most people find that the design of the addition is harmonious with deferential to and relates to the building below and that this particular building can have an addition, given its typology and its simplicity. And and I think most people are comfortable with the removal of the spandrels and creating larger windows with the terracotta spandrels. And so I think there are still some level of details in the facades that I think the staff can continue to work on to ensure that we have the level of articulation that we generally like to see in facades. But I think maybe what we would do now is we could approve the project, but have them come back for the storefronts. I think the storefronts are really going to be tenant specific and you're not there yet. And when you start to think about the tenancy and how many doors you'll need, what those details will be and the signage, you can come back to us for that. And so we'll go ahead and we'll approve the building, but just take the storefront findings. Yeah. Okay.
There are two separate ones.
Two separate. Sorry.
With regards to LPC 25-05060, 43 West 23rd Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, an Art Deco style factory building designed by Corey and Corey built in 1925, 1926. Application is to alter the ground floor infill and construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Miles Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the removal of the existing modern infill at one story bay and the utilitarian rooftop bulkheads will not damage or eliminate any significant architecture features. That setting the new entrance infill back within the opening and the design of the entrance and storefront infill across the building base incorporating large areas of glazing will be in keeping with the sense of the transparency that historically existed at the loading docks at the base of the building, that the green terracotta cladding and neutral zinc entrance infill will harmonize with other finishes found at the building, that the building of this type throughout the historic district were commonly constructed with visible penthouse, rooftop bulkheads and other accretions. Therefore, the construction of a partially visible one story rooftop addition at this building will be consistent with the historic roofscape, that the painted concrete cladding and expanses of glazing of the addition will be compatible with the historic building and not undue attention to themselves, that the proposed addition will only be visible at oblique angles from the east and west along 22nd Street and 6th Avenue in conjunction with existing rooftop accretions to remain. And the height and setback of the proposed addition, when seen over the secondary west facade, will not substantially interrupt the building silhouette and will remain subordinate to the primary facade and and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building. However, the details of the proposed addition and entrance infill are not well developed. And therefore, I recommend that the details of the addition and renovation be developed with staff and the entrance infill be further refined, consultation with staff and brought back. Correct.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry. Refined with the consultation with the staff and brought back to the commission.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfee?
Aye.
Commissioner Master? With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, so that was approved.
With regards to LPC 25-0380250, West 23rd Street, aka 37 West 22nd Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, a 20th century industrial style factory building designed by Corey and Corey and built in 1954. Application is to alter facade, create courtyard and construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building was built in 1954 outside the main period of significance of the Ladies Mile Historic District, which lasted from the 1850s through the 1920s. I also note that the building is a through block building and that the West 23rd Street facade has been significantly altered over time pursuant to prior commission approval. With regard to modification of the existing facade, I note that the proposed work will help support the adaptive reuse of the building for housing, that the West 23rd Street facade has been significantly altered over time, and therefore, its redesign will not damage or remove any significant architectural features, that the proposed multi light metal factory style windows at the facade will be compatible with the building's original type and the historically mixed use character of the historic district, that the installation of ribbed terracotta span sympathetic later alterations and help restore a sense of verticality to the West 23rd Street facade, that the West 22nd Street facade features a simple concrete clad design. Therefore, the enlargement of the window openings and cladding of the spandrels in ribbed terracotta panels will not damage or remove any significant architectural features and will maintain its industrial character while visually relating to the historic terracotta at the adjoining building, that the setting of the entrance back from within the first floor masonry opening will recall in a contemporary way the loading bays that currently and historically existed at the building, that the contemporary vocabulary of the redesigned facade will create a harmonious juxtaposition with the surrounding street state, that the increase in glazing area at the slow portion of the West 23rd Street facade will recall industrial skylights sometimes found at buildings of this type, that the creation of large lot line window openings adjacent to the north facade will be in keeping with the windows sometimes found at exposed facades, return to taller buildings within the historic district, and the removal of portions of secondary facade to create a courtyard will not eliminate any significant historic features and will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. However, I note that the design first floor infill is not well developed and should be developed and returned to the commission for review, that the overall amount of glazing, nope, sorry. I recommend that the design of the first floor infill, including finishes and details, be further refined.
Okay.
With, did I? What? Right. With regards to the rooftop addition, I note that the block and historic district feature a combination of low and mid rise buildings, tall buildings on larger lots and taller thinner buildings on smaller lots formerly occupied by residential buildings. Therefore, a large overall building incorporating a tall rooftop addition could be in keeping with the character of the varying heights found throughout the streetscape and historic district, that the simple and repetitive design of the existing utilitarian building could have been, could have been applied to an even taller building without compromising its design or character. And this flexibility supports the introduction of a multi story addition to the building, that the design of the proposed addition, addition featuring large multi light metal window assemblies that were core historic factory windows will help it remain a subordinate presence at the roof while harmonizing with the industrial, industrial character of the existing building, that the asymmetrical massing and design visible secondary facade of the addition featuring narrow punched openings will recall exposed secondary facades of buildings found in historic districts in a contemporary way, that the main bulk of the addition on West 23rd Street side of the building will be seen in the context of similar scales, buildings to the west and taller new buildings across the street, that the one story portion of the proposed addition extending south of the main block of the addition to the West 22nd Street side of the building will only be seen at oblique angles from the east in conjunction with existing rooftop accretions and background buildings, and the light neutral color palette painted concrete material will be harmonious with the cast iron terracotta and stone cladding found throughout the historic district. However, I note
Yep.
However, the details at the ground floor need to be developed developed, as well as some of the details of the existing and addition building. And that working with staff and for the ground floor, coming back to the commission, will hopefully resolve this in an appropriate way.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Chapin.
I hate this one.
No. Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Master.
Aye.
With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you. And we're going to move to item number four and try to do that now before the lunch break.
All right. Item number four is LPC 25-01050. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 849, Lot 70, 915 Broadway, in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is a modern eclectic-style store loft and office building designed by Joseph Martin and built in 1925 to 26. And the application is to install wall-mounted flues.
Hello, Commissioners. Ryan Zieg, Preservation Staff. I'm joined by the architect and a membership, a member of ownership today to discuss this application at 915 Broadway. The building is located at the southwest corner of East 21st Street and Broadway in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This application is to install five wall-mounted flues originating at the roof of the shorter neighboring building, 913 Broadway, and extending up the south facade of 915. This matters before you today instead of being handled at the staff level due to the visibility of the proposed installation and because only three of the proposed five flues are planned for immediate use to address an ongoing ventilation issue. The remaining two are being reserved for future purposes. This visibility study will show the proposed installation from various vantage points. Images A through D at the top show the view from the southwest on 5th Avenue. And images E through H on the bottom show the approach of Broadway from the southeast. Image I in the upper-left corner shows the proposed installation as will be seen from Broadway between East 20th and 21st Streets. The view looking south from Broadway and 5th Avenue at the west side of Madison Square Park are seen in the remaining images J through P. And Q and R. And for your reference, we also have existing conditions photos at the rooftop bulkhead where the flues will terminate. As well as the existing conditions photos documenting the roof at 913 Broadway where the flues will begin. For background, we also see this photo on the right that there had been a previous wall-mounted installation at this facade that has been removed. For context, to help illustrate the reasons for this proposal, which the applicant will discuss, these existing conditions photos show the difference in height between 913 Broadway and 915 Broadway. Here we see the proposal in the existing additions at 913 Broadway and plan. And at 915 Broadway. The proposal in elevation. And more detail at the lower half. And then at the termination of the installation. And now to discuss this proposal in further detail.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Rosani with Michael's NRH Architects. I'm joined by Jake Casely with ABS Partners, who represents the ownership of 915 Broadway. And this project came to us at, as a NISA. The problem that we're facing is that the restaurant at 913 Broadway was recently renovated over the past year, and they've installed a number of wood-burning ovens in their restaurant. And this is the location of the previous punch restaurant, which for years existed with no issue to any of our buildings in this area. But with the installation of these new wood-burning flues, we've been running into a lot of quality-of-life issues in regards to the tenants of 913 Broadway and the neighboring 70th, 20th residential building. So over the past few months, this has been an ongoing issue, and ownership has been trying to find a solution. And at their own cost, they're trying to spearhead this and provide these new flues for 913 Broadway. And in addition, providing at the same time two additional flues that would be used for a potential restaurant tenant at 915 Broadway in the future. But we figured if we're going through the time and the expense of installing three of them now, could we install all five at one time? I know this is a pretty straightforward presentation. Be willing to answer any questions that might come up, but there's just not a whole lot to talk about.
Okay, so, but three of the flues are for 903?
Three of them are for immediate use for 913 Broadway.
913?
Yes.
And then the other two would be for a potential future tenant at 915?
Yes.
The building on which.
Which is presently a Charles Schwab investment office space. It used to be a restaurant prior to that conversion about 10 years ago. And we're just looking towards the future that if we do get a future tenant, do we have the ability to have a restaurant tenant in this building?
So this is handling it for two buildings. Commissioner Ginsburg.
What color will the flues be or material?
Oh, well, they're standard black iron, you know, flues. We're proposing having them painted with a high-temperature paint to match the brickwork of the building.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. We thank Commissioner Ginsburg for his question. We did not realize that the flues were going to be painted. And so our testimony is based on the fact that we found them to be inappropriately visible on the design secondary facade of the adjacent building. We hope that the applicant will shroud the ductwork in a decorative cowling that works with the building's brick patterning. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends denial unless the kitchen exhaust flues can be moved to a less visible location on the side elevation of the applicant, such as toward the rear of the building, deeper into the lot, making it less visible, and limits the total number of flues from five to three. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
So this was brought up at our community board hearing. Their concern was trying to push these flues further into the building because of the configuration, 915 Broadway as a corner building. It's an L shape. And if we can scroll through to some of these photographs. I think this one right here that I'm looking at is a good representation that you can see 913 Broadway is this lower building in white. And 915 Broadway is the L-shaped building. And if we were to push them any further back, they would be covering windows. And it's not something that's feasible to install kitchen exhaust flues over a window, even though this is an office building. It's still not something that we can really accommodate. And you can see even in this photograph where the flue historically was located on this wall. You know, the further you go into the block, it's entirely windows. So we would obviously like to reduce the visibility. This just happens to be a very difficult building, given its visibility from the south of Union Square.
And if you were to shift it slightly in, further in, would you still have to be taller than the bulkhead? Or would that actually, would you just only have to go up to the parapet height? And would that be too close to the?
To the parapet height? It's possible. One of the guiding factors here is that we had came to the commission last year to have an elevator installed in this building from the top floor up to the roof. And subsequent applications have been filed to install decorative skylights and a pedestrian roof terrace for the tenants in the building. So this is going to be an occupied roof as well. So we were also concerned about, you know, having these exhaust rooms affecting the people on the roof terrace.
Add it.
So we looked for the most, you know. It's a tough location.
Okay, all right. Any other final questions? No? Okay, so let's close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Come on.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. And just to provide a little context on this, the staff can approve visible flues on side walls for shorter buildings that go adjacent taller buildings if there is no other alternative. And so this is coming before us because there are five flues while they're spending the money and time to do the three. They are thinking now proactively about the potential use changes in the 915 building and addressing that at this time. But so I think that it's important to note, though, that staff can approve some visible flues that are visible in this way. They are proposing to paint them out to match the brick. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. I see the necessity here. I think that the, given the, as the has been stated, this is a difficult location to work with, and there's only very limited options as to where this can go. And given the rise in lung cancer, especially in the Asian community, due to the, I think I can find that appropriate.
All right. Vice Chair Bland.
Seems to me to be a big trade-off for a restaurant that all of a sudden decided they needed a wood-burning fireplace. Sort of troubled by it, but certainly the painting of the flues mitigates to some large degree, but not totally. The highly visible situation that is caused by this. I don't know, I'm sort of betwixt and between, but probably will vote for it. But it's, I think it's troublesome. It's a troublesome precedent, too.
Well, as I said, we have approved.
Yeah, I know.
In situations where you have a little building next to a big building, we have approved flues going up the facade. And it is, you know, it's always a little bit of a struggle.
We never question the purpose of the flues, however. It's just like, they're a given, and they're, how do we deal with it? Here it's sort of like, okay, so you need a wood-burning fireplace in that little building all of a sudden.
Commissioner, if I can say, we don't normally, we don't look into that. That's not a question. I, it's a question, you know. They need a flu, and so that's why the rules were passed that we could just instead of bringing it to the commission. And I think in this case, it's just because of this, this sort of prophylactic quality of trying to add extra two to avoid in the future, it would be forward to your research.
I stand by my skepticism. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Chapin.
Okay. I think this is typical of other kinds of rooftop accretions, and I can approve it.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I definitely appreciate what Fred is saying. That said, I think in terms of uses and retail space, buildings today have to be very thoughtful, and they have to think with some, and plan with some foresight in terms of being able to secure and retain a variety of users. So I think what they're doing is good. Planning for the future is not a bad idea because the second time you go back, as long as you're doing work to begin with, the extra cost is not going to be as much as if you go back again. So I conceptually can accept this, and I also think it makes sense that they are doing their best to have them blend in by painting them the color of the brick.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I represent clients who are restaurants, and I understand how important it is to have an ancillary system. It's absolutely critical. So you do need these flues, not only if you have a wood-burning oven, but any type of kitchen really should be ventilated properly. So I understand how important this is. It is a secondary facade. This is really the only place, I think, on this facade that they can put it. And I think that the streetscape can handle it. It's, there's various heights, you know, there's chimneys, there's all sorts of stuff going on. Once they paint it, I really don't think people are going to notice it. So I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson.
It's necessary. But every time I see one of these things, I always say, why not make it into some kind of artistic statement? You know, the spacing of them or the color of them or, we have to have them, but make them fun instead of just a functional drab thing going up a wall. And if they could do that, because they seem to have two different sizes, right? They have, they have a 20 inches, 16 inches, and then they, if they could space them differently, do something, you know.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I'm okay with them as shown. I mean, I think that the city is not a buttoned-up, tidy, tidy place, and this kind of stuff is part of our visual landscape. And I'm kind of okay with that.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree. It's appropriate.
All right, so I think we have enough to support this. Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
In the matter, LPC 25-01050, 915 Broadway, Ladies Mile Historic District. The application is to install wall-mounted flues, noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That locations for installing flues are limited by the location of existing building services and fenestration. That three of the proposed flues will alleviate an existing ventilation issue, and the two additional flues, while not required at this time, will help address future needs while providing a neat, uniform appearance of the flu at this facade. That the placement of the flu in metal brackets at plain brickworks anchored by mortar joints will not damage or disrupt the composition of the secondary lotline facade. That the flues will be in keeping with other utilitarian chimney and flues found at buildings of a similar type, style, and age, and will be simple in design and finished to blend with the facade. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.